Pursuant to chapter two of the acts of two thousand twenty-three. This meeting will be conducted in person and as a courtesy by a remote means in accordance with applicable law. Please note that while an option for remote attendance and participation is being provided as a courtesy to the public. And board members, meeting or hearing will not be suspended or terminated if a technological problem interrupts the virtual broadcast unless required by law. Members of the public wish to watch the meeting, they do so by using the zoom login information. Users can visit pack TV dot org slash ducksbury for information about duck program programming, click streaming and watching. All right, first item we have is a open forum, anything anybody has updates on that is not on our current agenda this evening. Management, no, nothing, okay. Or send anything away. No, okay, very good, anybody in the public here, any items that aren't on the agenda. Right, they're open forum. Administrative items. Hawthorne Hill subdivision deadline extension. Just looking. Not uncommon, hoping to extend finishing everything off until the rest of the houses are done. And then we've got the minutes for July eight, twenty twenty-four.
Those were not in the package, it's gonna be on the next.
I'll be asked, okay. You know, I missed. All right, so we have Hawke on Hill subdivision deadline extension. If anybody has anything they really want to get into on that. Entertaining a motion to extend their deadline, what was the date they were on time when they were one year, yeah. To extend their deadline to give them another. Yeah, we'll get the planning board accept the request of the Hawthorne subdivision for a one-year extension to the finished sidewalks and plinths. Second, okay, motion in second, any discussion? Speaking on that call for a roll call vote. So we'll start off with Kristen.
Kristen rap, I.
Wayne Dennison, I.
They are extended. Thanks, you might be late, we're on time for the six oh five public. All right, next item, we have six oh five public hearing definitive subdivision plan for forty-seven Harden Hill Road. Harden Hill LLC and Bayview at Harden Hill LLC. Um, let's see here, so we need to. Open. For both the public hearing. And then. I would say most likely. In a motion to waive the reading. Notice and documents. Unless we want to read all of those. Okay, so if one make that so move, okay, second, second, motion in the second roll call vote, Kristen.
Kristen rap, I.
I Wayne Dennison.
All right, so we're open. Turn it over to you, Mr. Pro.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, for the record, Paul Ragnar, Seacoast Engineering in town and I'm with you this evening on behalf of the. Most of the members of the Pino family, we have Donna and Bob Pino, the owners of sixty-seven Harden Hill Road. One of their sons and daughter-in-law, Brian and Kelsey, they're at thirty-three in the back house. And there's a Brad Pino up on the screen, another son and a Ryan Hamilton, a son-in-law. Who's also on the screen, Emily, I'm not sure if you invited them in or if they can hear everything at this point. Okay, so outside of you members of the planning board. And Mark from the M A P C, everybody else is part of the Pino family. Okay, all right. As most of us know, we were here two weeks ago back on the eighth of July for the second meeting or the first official meeting with the project to. If you will, subdivide the two lots at thirty-one, thirty-three and forty-seven. Harden Hill Road. Two weeks ago, we carved out the A and I lot. And basically left what you see in front of you this evening. I think the memo from Mr. Halke Otis that you received, I think the end of the week when I did is is very conclusive, it's very straightforward. And it basically shows where we are today. Where we want to go to tomorrow and where we've been over the last few months. But just as a quick overview here, obviously, we started with two lots at thirty-one, thirty-three and forty-seven, we had three point four acres of land. We surveyed everything and we came out with enough land to create three normal lots, each with two hundred feet of frontage and forty thousand square feet of contiguous upland. Along with the wetlands that we have on the southern edge. Uh, so by carving out the A and I lot two weeks ago in the public hearing for tonight, we are here to look at the. The proposed two lot subdivision. With the. Two point three acres that are left, okay. And obviously what we showed before is the proposed right-of-way where we're creating two hundred feet of frontage for each of the lot A and lot B respectively. Uh, and obviously with the normal meets and bounds that. Are shown there to create a conforming lot in accordance with the rules and regulations for the duct space subdivision control loss. Um, when we met back in May, I know we discussed verbally five or six waivers that we think would be appropriate here. Because we are proposing not to build a common driveway, we're basically going to provide. Normal frontage for each of the two new lots and with the existing driveway that currently exists for forty-seven. And the small driveway that we're proposing for the second lot, uh, we do not really need a a common roadway coming in to service these two lots. And obviously as a domino effect for that, with that, there's no real need for. A drainage plan, a roadway profile plan. Stormwater report, the roadway plan and profile. Each lot is going to have its own driveway, ten or twelve feet in width, not the standard sixteen to eighteen foot driveway that we would need to support the two houses. And with that lack of construction, there's really no need for an environmental impact assessment and any mitigation measures respectfully. And then over the last week or so, Paul and I worked on waivers seven through ten that you see on his memo. For obviously the air's built plan, the road acceptance plan, the performance bond and any surety documents that would be required. So in front of you, you'll see the proposed subdivision of the land along with our request to. Respectfully request ten waivers from the subdivision control laws because we basically don't need them to oppose what you see in front of you tonight. Okay. Emily, could you go to sheet two, please? This is sheet two, just showing the existing condition plan, which basically shows the majority of forty-seven that is there right now, the one on the east side of the parcel. And obviously the new lot line in here is the new one that we created two weeks ago tonight. Okay, uh, next going, please. Okay, so what you see here is similar to what we have on on sheet one, but as far as our proposed condition plan, you'll see where we have. The hundred and fifty-foot circle in here to demonstrate that the. Two lots meet the requirements of the town, one lot will have two hundred and fourteen. Plus or minus feet of frontage, the other one two sixty-two. Lot A on the left is one point one four acres, about forty-nine thousand four hundred square feet and lot B is forty-seven to forty, about one point one acres. And I think in a couple of the memos that you received from border health and conservation, we have discussed the plan with them, we have not done any. Title five percolation test, obviously with the three dwellings that have been here before, we feel fairly comfortable that. Three new perks for the three lots for the three new homes will be successful. But obviously with the wetlands in the back, we'll be within a hundred feet of the edge of the wetland, so with the normal buffer zone and wetlands requirements, we will have to do a normal. Uh, N O I filing with with the conservation commission for each of the three lots. So we still got a way to go, but at least this is the stepping stone here to get us from A to B. Okay. Anybody have any questions so far? Okay, I know a letter of support, I know we talked about this before, uh. The sisters of Saint Margaret and Sister Christine Francis, Christina Francis wrote the letter that you should have a copy of their supporting the project. And I think she was very, uh. Pleased that the Pinos have reached out to to the sisters, you know, at the appropriate time to discuss the entire project, short-term, long-term project here. And obviously with the sisters across the street, they know the area as well as anybody also. So I'm going to say very briefly, uh, at at this point, what you see in front of you is what we're proposing. I think from Mr. Halke Otis's memo, uh, these dimensional requirements, the meets and bounds of the of the two lots. Meet all the requirements for the planning board for the town of Duxbury and obviously the the letters of support that we've received. But equally as important, the rest of the work that we have to do is a challenge to all of us, but you know, we feel comfortable that with your support tonight. That we can proceed to the next step of the process here and ultimately, you know, within. A short period of time, you know, get all the permits in place, but obviously we've got three homes to to design and then permitting for. Each of those three homes to the two boards in in town and ultimately in a couple of years have this project fully underway and and as far down the road as as we can take it, so. Uh, without any further ado, if there are any questions, I'd be even happy to address them and appreciate all your help and support, thank you.
Members of the board, have any, any questions at all?
Yeah, just just a quick question for Paul, Paul, you mentioned letters, I'm only seeing one just from the Society of Saint Margaret, were there others in our packet?
There weren't any other letters, um, and this letter just came in, um, dated July eighteenth from the Society of Saint Margaret and I have that, I can read it into the record. It doesn't have it.
No, I I do have that one, I thought Paul said that there are multiple letters, that's what I was asking about.
What I probably meant, Kristen, was that the letters that we received from the Board of Health and Conservation Commission weren't letters of. Non-support, but they just basically still just still have to come through us to get all the permits in place, I'm sorry.
No, 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 I I think I must have misunderstood, okay, thanks, Paul, appreciate it.
No problem, thank you. And I do want to thank Paul and Emily for all their help and guidance over the last couple of months because they've had a couple of questions that responded, I've had a few questions and. It's been a good two-way conversation and communication over the last couple of months, so thank you very much.
And obviously with all of this created, you're not maintaining the non-conformity of. Multiple residents on any of these properties, even by the way you've divided it, one house has ended up on one and the other house has ended up on the other that even exists now, right, lot lines going down the middle. Just want to be sure nobody thinks that that's being saved, you can throw a second house up on one of the property.
Unless the zoning changes, other people have been talking about in town, you know, with the key and everybody, no, I'm not going to go there.
So I, I mean, this is new to me and I, uh, so. Beg your indulgence as I learn about this, uh, I have a couple of questions, technical questions. Now, so let me start with the first one, I understand in the bylaw that there's a requirement that. And I may not hope this correctly, that there needs to be four thousand square feet on the frontage in front of the house. Corner of the lot or something like that, can you just point out where that is on here?
When the survey, it's on a couple of working plans, I guess not on the final plan when Merrill did the survey work, that four thousand square foot item was reviewed. Coordinated, we had a couple of questions back and forth, but it's basically that that requirement between the house and the street, the four thousand square feet based on. Again, where the homes are going to be, we haven't got to the level of the actual footprint, I think one of the Pino siblings is an architect. So he may be charged with some of these responsibilities, but again, not having seen that plan is one of the normal requirements that once they get into the conceptual and. And definitive plans for the house that we'll have to look at that to make sure that nothing changes.
That generally gets picked up at the building department.
Correct, yeah.
Good to know, thank you, and so the other question is similar, uh, you know, I. There's a tacit understanding that this. Isn't actually going to be constructed.
The bounds as required, two, four, six bounds will be in place, uh, that's a requirement, that's a normal requirement.
Country farms will help like that.
Correct.
Sure, but I mean, in terms of the actual roadway being extended into a right-of-way.
No.
Paying paving and all of that, so my question is this, and I understand it's not designed yet, so it's an unfair question. What's the frontage across what's shown there from edge to edge across both lots? The linear street frontage on the C G roadway, not the drawing, but the actual.
On this, without the cul-de-sac on paper, okay, one forty-seven, two forty-seven, two fifty-seven, two sixty-seven. Two eighty-five.
So we'll have two two driveways and two hundred and eighty.
Oh, of street frontage.
Reality.
Correct, that is, yeah.
Because, you know, when somebody drives down the road, that's what I'm just experiencing, and I just want to make sure I have an idea of that. So it's, that's what I was trying to drive it in a hundred. And we don't know whether they're going to fall again.
Correct.
And Paul, the proposed right-of-way is going to just remain a paper street?
Correct, that is exactly right, it's similar to one that we talked about from thirty-five years ago in town and all the street, right across from the town squirts, which we all go by frequently.
The existing structure that is going to straddle both will be raised.
I understand that all three of them ultimately will be raised and replaced.
I would say before, obviously, before any building can happen on that left lot there, that house is going to come down, so.
Correct, exactly, so in other words, if this gets built first, then forty-seven has to come down and obviously. L C and Brian may move from one of the older homes, maybe to the new one.
Yeah, and I would also say that the left-hand lot there.
Correct, exactly.
Because the other building is straddling it.
That's why we haven't done for a test or anything because we really don't know where where the piping is going to be, obviously.
But the theory is you'll have the driveways, one of the driveways basically coming in where it does now, oh, on that side, then then way down the other end.
Correct.
I thank you, Mr. Chairman, I've reviewed the subdivision plan file. There, this is an unusual subdivision in that there is no road being proposed. And thus create a paper cul-de-sac. The only wrinkle that those can create is neighbors not knowing where the actual property line is. Since it's a paper cul-de-sac, in this scenario, I think the neighbors are going to know each other and they won't be disputing over. Way to plant the flowers on this property. There is a a list of ten waivers from strict compliance with the subdivision rules and regulations. And the regulations required at the planning board, you make a determination that in judgment of the board. Um, it's in the public's best interest to grant these particular waivers. And as I said in my memo to the board. When we have a project that has virtually no environmental impacts, there's no clearing of trees, no grading. No impervious surfaces. That require stormwater management that oftentimes requires more grading and trees be cleared. If we have a project with no actual construction, uh. Very few environmental, uh. Uh, issues created and and in my mind, that is in the public's interest to have a project that. Will will bring, uh, new homes, uh, at the end of the day, which will have increased value and and expand the tax base. So, um, I think that this is a project that that really doesn't have a lot of concerns for the planning board. I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Sure. From the public, anyone with any comments? Okay. So seeing that we don't seem to have too many more questions, this is pretty straightforward, I mean, while I was out, you guys handled the A and I portion of it, so. So we basically had originally had three houses. On these two properties that we're working on, and we're going to end up with three houses on three now conforming. Correct, properties, so everything's good, the street seat isn't going to change much, it's newer houses versus where the old house. So I personally don't have any issues with waiver requests, we're sure we went, we went to everything, there aren't any other ones that you're going to need later, right, so we're good right there. I personally don't have any issue with it, I don't know, anybody else on the board have any issues with any of the waivers? No, two shakes, no, 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 it's just there, okay. So, uh. I don't, I don't personally see any other outstanding issues that I assume nobody else, if we're not in a problem with the waivers, not having anything else, nobody else have any other. Outstanding issues that they want resolved prior to us closing this hearing?
Well, I it's not true to this particular instance, and I don't want to delay this in any way, but I had a question in terms of setting the best now, we have the paper street. And voided a whole bunch of requirements, does this give another developer in the future the ability to come up with some? Rather unusual.
This isn't the only one that we have.
This isn't done.
So is there one that's to the top? No, no, we we can, you could have something almost identical, but there'd be some little other little twist to it and then we have to work through all those items and then maybe in that case we don't grant all. I think this is pretty straightforward, that, I mean, it's not even like we're ending up with four houses instead of three, it's pretty, it's pretty straightforward. One family rearranging their property, so. And making it much more, much more compliant. So, yeah, yeah. If we get to look at everything individually. Renting waivers for one does not grant waivers for others. Okay. So the first thing we would need to do would be to. Vote on the waivers. Do them individually, or would we preferably do them all as a group? Anyone care to make a motion? Or want the, I will say I will entertain a motion to accept, uh, all waivers as requested. So who? Second, motion in second, a roll call vote, Kristen.
Kristen, Kristen rap, I.
Wayne?
Wayne Dennison, I.
Ted Carpenter, I, Scott Casserini, I, Matthew Ray.
All right. Voted the waivers. We don't have anything else we need to talk about there, uh, so at this point, I will entertain a motion to close the public hearing, unless anybody has anything else. Final calls. All right. Entertain a motion to close the public hearing, move to close public hearing, second, second, motion in second, roll call vote, Kristen.
Kristen rap, I, to be fast.
Wayne Dennison, I.
Ted Carpenter, I, Scott Casserini, I, Matthew Ray.
Excellent, so it closed public hearing. I don't really see. Any conditions that we really need to talk about here. We have an understanding, you're not allowed to put two houses on even though you were non-conforming before, that would obviously keep that non-conforming status, you'd have to go through the zoning board of appeals to begin with. Kind of done that now, this is crossed it up, so no interest in that. Paul, you think of any other conditions you might want?
I don't know, I can't think of any. We'll take a look at the, um, at the standard conditions, um, and. The board, uh, after you take a vote, um, we could have a draft decisions for the board with those conditions, um, hopefully for the next meeting.
Okay. Um, yeah, we're just doing our standard conditions. Very straightforward, we just need to make sure we we take out anything that. Get the way we're talking. Obviously, we go standing there. So now basically you're at the point of, uh. Vote for approval of the subdivision plan as proposed. Entertain a motion or do so, move as you like, or review the subdivision plan as proposed for forty-seven, um, this is just forty-seven. It's subdivision review forty-seven, thirty-one and thirty-three, is that what it's deemed called, that's the official paperwork? Yes, forty-seven, forty-seven, because this is just forty-seven.
And the print stated, uh, June fourteenth, plans as dated June, June fourteenth. Forty-seven.
Okay, second, motion in second, discussion. Speaking then call for roll call vote, Kristen.
Kristen rap, I.
Wayne Dennison, I.
Ted Carpenter, I, Scott Casserini, I, Matthew Ray.
Hey, you are approved, obviously, they, uh, everything will come through with the conditions that are standard conditions. Everybody got to do all your, obviously, with that. And congratulations and.
Thank you. We're proud of it.
Thank you very much.
As preservation and stuff, we're in the metropolitan area planning, we're zoning for the residential coverage.
Thank you very much, thank you again.
We have Alexis. Planning planner at M A P C and Kar. Correctly, and Kar is a development planner at M A P C, um, they've been hired to. Help update the inclusionary zoning bylaw and the residential cluster bylaw. Um, they've done an analysis of the bylaw so far, had a meeting, uh, with town council and the town manager. And they're here tonight to brief the board on their work so far and, uh, lay out some kind of policy questions to the board to discuss. And I will turn it over to that, excellent.
I should also mention that we're also joined by, um, Mark Rassagon, who is the director of land use at M A P C.
Hi, good evening, everybody, uh, my name is Kar, we're both regional planners here, um, and we have been working with Duxbury, uh, for a little over half a year now on this project. And, um, yeah. And as Paul mentioned, the purpose of what we're doing today is, um, to. Align two bylaws, which are the residential conservation cluster bylaw and inclusionary zoning bylaw with, um, recent legal rulings. The town of Duxbury has. Um, understood that there have been, um, challenges and they've been trying to, um. Figure out how to amend them to bring the bylaws into compliance and that's what we're here to do. And, uh, so there's three purposes of, uh, the overall project, which is to align with the legal rulings. Encourage residential conservation cluster development, um, and to ensure that the inclusionary zoning can be applied to. The single-family development in a manner consistent with Matthew's general law. A little bit of background, um, as the, um, the town. Has been working with us, uh, since about December, uh, we first worked with Chris, now working with Paul. Got to meet with, um, the town manager and legal counsel as well, who has reviewed the memo that all of you have also received. Okay, so, um, just an overview, we're going to start with the residential conservation cluster. Um, bylaw, so the R C C bylaw as it stands today. Applies to subdivisions of land in six or more lots. The bylaw also seeks however that it is the preferred development style for residential developments of five or more acres. Into and or six of our lots. And it is also allowed on lots of at least five acres in all zoning districts, um, residential compatibility district, so that's everywhere. Um, and however, so it requires the developer to submit a proposal for both an R C C and a conventional, um. Development design and then the planning board decides which way the developer should go with that. Um, currently, the current incentives are, uh, reduced lot size and frontage. And it requires twenty-five percent of the total water to be dedicated for roads and infrastructure. Um, this.
Not a big incentive.
Yes. So there's some challenges, uh. So, there's some challenges, the challenges that we've identified. To start off with is that the requirements are quite high, and the concessions do not necessarily outweigh them. The outcomes can also vary drastically depending on the specific lot in question. And the bylaw itself has contradictory language today. The pluggability, of course, the town cannot require, yes.
The slide presentation is not advancing for the board members who are viewing on screen. They're still seeing just the first slide.
That any better?
That looks good.
Okay, can you try advancing once, just to make sure it also advances?
Um, I'm not, I'm not hearing anything. Emily, it looks like you're muted.
I'm not hearing anything either.
Yeah, I think, I'm not sure how long that's been going on, we thought you were just having some technical difficulties. Can you go back to the start, please, and also could you put this in presentation mode, if you click on the little, there's a button, a little icon to the left of the.
When it's in presentation mode is when it's crashing Zoom, so this was kind of a way to make it not crash.
Alright, that, that's fine, we can hear you now, thank you.
Sorry. Okay, I'm gonna talk much more quickly this time. Okay, so we are here to bring the RCC residential conservation cluster zoning and inclusionary zoning by law. Into compliance with recent legal rulings, if you could advance to the next slide. And the next one, so.
You can do that with a touchscreen.
Oh, sorry, stop. So much technology, alright, so the town has understood that there are challenges in these bylaws, so they have. Asked for and received legal interpretations in the past, and then, a few years ago, the town applied for. A grant from the Executive Office of Energy and Environmental Affairs. Received the grant and then contracted with M A P C in December, and we've been working on this project for the last few months, first with Chris, now with Paul. And then we had the advantage of meeting both with legal counsel and town manager, who, whose general consensus. Was in support of the recommendations, and they directed us to come to planning board for further insight and direction. So, the current bylaw as it states. As it stands today. I'm just gonna check in real quick, everybody can see slide and hear me? Cool, alright, so the current bylaw today. Applies to subdivisions of land into six or more lots. And then it states also, however, it's the preferred development style for residential development of five or more acres and six or more lots. And then it also states, and it's allowed pretty much everywhere with five acres or more. In residential district, in single-family residential districts, here's the residential compatibility district in Duxbury. It requires the developer to submit two proposals, one in the form of the conventional development, one in the form of the RCC. It does provide incentives, but only in the, through reduced lot size and frontage. And it requires twenty-five percent of the lot area to be dedicated for roads and infrastructure, and that's after subtracting for wetlands, et cetera. So, our findings are that the current concessions are not strong enough to incentivize cluster development. It, they include, it includes contradictory language, it produces. Varied, drastically varied results, and. The requirements outweigh the concessions offered, essentially. Also, the language is not, so the other problem is, it's not compliant with recent legal rulings. Because the town cannot require both, both proposed plans for discretionary approval. And the town also requires both a subdivision approval and a special permit approval, which is further burdensome. And ultimately, this doesn't, this process is not producing additional conserved open space. It, in the most effective way, as it could, which is in line with like the town's conservation goals. And our recommendations resulting from that, for your consideration, are. To allow cluster zoning by right, and to offer clear concessions and incentives. So, if an RCC meets development standards akin to a conventional development, it could be permitted by right. Further, a clear unit count density bonus would allow developers to understand what they're getting into. And property owners to understand also how to better develop their, their property. And the administr, and we also propose an administrative review process to streamline the implementation, to reduce burden. On current property owners like the subdivision we just saw earlier. To make it as feasible as possible. Alright, and now we're gonna switch over to the inclusionary zoning section.
Alright, still can see and hear everything, folks online, excellent. So, I'm sure y'all are familiar with this, but just a very quick review of the inclusionary bylaw. It applies to both subdivisions of six or more lots and or construction of six or more units. Within a project, it requires that ten percent of new units be affordable to households earning eighty percent of the area median income, that's a very standard requirement. That's probably the most common inclusionary requirement across the state. And the developer has the option to seek planning board approval or Z B A approval, to, in lieu of providing those units on site, the developer can ask to either provide the units offsite, to provide a land donation, or in the case of ownership units only, to provide in a fee in lieu of. Running units on site, so those are kind of basic parameters of the bylaw. There are two big questions with the application of this inclusionary policy to subdivisions that we're, that we'll talk about here tonight, there's a couple of other things that I'll get into, or that, you know, we can get into, but the two things that I wanna focus on are. Inclusionary zoning and subdivisions, I think one of the, the reasons why the town wanted to, to, you know, pursue this project was that in twenty twenty-one, there was a state court trial ruling that. Pretty explicitly said that inclusionary zoning cannot apply to subdivisions, which, you know, threw a wrench in, Duxbury is not the only town that that threw a wrench in their, their bylaw. And so in the issue is that, you know, if a project, it is, is, you know, similar to the RCC district, if a project is already permissible by right. Then attaching a requirement for affordable housing is, there's not, the, the court found that there wasn't enough of a connection between affordable housing and subdivision law, exceeded what is permissible under subdivision law. So, that's issue number one, the second big issue is that the town's current bylaw requires a special permit, essentially to administrator, administrate the inclusionary zoning. Even if a subdivision project or, or any project is, is permissible, is allowed by right. The inclusionary zoning itself triggers a special permit requirement, which the planning board can then deny if the project doesn't wish to provide the affordable units. And that is also pretty, that, that's problematic, because it attaches, you know, because it attaches a special permit to a project that would other be allowed by, otherwise be allowed by right. That is an issue for the subdivisions, and also an issue for any future MBTA communities district, which. You must be allowed multifamily by right, and it would be a shame if the inclusionary bylaw could not apply to, to any future MBTA communities district. And so having this special permit mechanism is the automatic way to administer the inclusionary bylaw is something we're, we're gonna look at. There's several other things that, that probably warrant some attention, two, two ones noted here are the methodology for calculating the in-Luffy. And also the methodology for determining the resale price for ownership units, I can get into that if you'd like. Or that's detailed in the memo that, that Paul provided to you all, happy to get in further information, but for now, we'll just kind of stick with where inclusionary zoning overlaps the RCC. Let's see, this is so much fun, this touchscreen. So, what we're proposing or what we're recommending is a get pairing the inclusionary with the RCC overlay. Specifically structuring the RCC as an overlay, which means that a developer maintains the option to pursue a conventional subdivision by right with no affordability. But they, and so that's, that, that, so then the RCC essentially becomes a density bonus. That enables the town to require inclusionary zoning as part of granting that density bonus, and so that is how. The, the, the town can kind of get around that, this, not get around, but you, you know, address the issue of, of inclusionary zoning not being able to apply to a subdivision on its, on its base. This would only apply to RCC subdivisions, not to a conventional subdivision, based on that most recent twenty twenty-one state court case, the town simply cannot apply inclusionary zoning to a conventional subdivision, so there's kind of no way around that one. But if it incentivizes RCC and makes it competitive with a conventional subdivision, then that's where the town can ask for inclusionary zoning. And this is, again, I mentioned the MBTA communities earlier, this is, this approach is very consistent with how the state is approaching MBTA communities districts that it has already approved, or is in the process of reviewing. Um, you know, structuring the density bonus as an overlay district and then pairing the affordability requirement with that overlay district. Is, you, this, how the state is recommending folks go about the applying inclusionary to a, a district that, or to, to development that's otherwise permissible by right. So, we think that, that will pass muster with this date. So, for the point of purposes of discussion, you're just a quick illustration of how this would work, you, and you all are familiar with the concept of RCC, you've got a, you know, conventional ten parcel, is, or, excuse me. A parcel that would be eligible for a ten, ten parcel subdivision. Applying RCC, and I should say, this is not actually illustrated plan, no roads, any, just, just for diagrammatic purposes. Applying RCC, you get a certain amount of preserved open space. That would also allow for the original ten baseline lots that could have been constructed under a conventional subdivision, and then. It would also allow for a bonus lot, or what we're recommending is bonus lots in, which would be part of, the biggest part of the incentive for the RCC. And then the required affordable lot, which the town can require in exchange for a developer accessing this overlay. What we're suggesting here is a starting point for discussion is two bonus market parcels in exchange for one affordable unit. We spent a lot of time talking about this internally. One bonus parcel for one affordable unit just isn't really a right incentive for developers. But that's, this is a, a starting point for discussion, but that's certainly one of the things that we're looking to the board for, for your input on this evening. Let's see, and that's kind of where, where we're, we're landing with our recommendations, but here are certain specific pieces of information that we would love to hear from you on, and then Paul also, I believe, had some items that he want, was hoping for the, the board's input on as well.
I had a, I have a bunch. Start off with, so we started off with RCC, the conservation cluster would be best if it was the by right. Version, we get, we have to have one by right, version in the bylaw. But it almost sounds like with the inclusionary housing. You're better off if the RCC were the special permit process to get the inclusionary housing in it and just leave standard subdivision as, as by right. Because we have to, we can't get inclusionary housing in a standard subdivision, right?
Yes, correct.
Which is the position we've been taking, we, our bylaws set up the way that it is now, we've been generally, lack of a better way of saying it, ignoring. The inclusionary housing, because we can't.
Certainly in light of the recent court decision.
Exactly, and at the same time, our RCC was not something that was incentivizing anybody to use it. I mean, I was. Just coming on to the board when we had our example of, hey, you have to bring us both proposals from somebody who had a standard subdivision, and that turned into. They didn't wanna do an RCC, the board said, we, we require you, we're picking you during the RCC, you withdrew, everything came back with a forty V with thirty-five units.
Oh, that, that explains the town's interest in taking action that.
So, we need to do it right, and the incentive, the bonus incentive seems best, in my opinion, where I landed on all of this, when I got involved in it, when all this went down, was. Standard subdivisions kind of ducks for, that's what ducks for it looks like. So, having that by right was fine, and then the RCC has a special permit, since it can have the inclusionary housing in it as well. As long as the special permit granting authority is offset, the planning board, we just do it all during the same meetings, I don't think it would be any more onerous than the amount of, like, where if we put a sub, normal subdivisions for. I don't think it would be any more onerous than the amount of like where if we put a sub, normal subdivisions for a little or anything else. If we could wrap it into the process and streamline it as much as possible, I think that would work with the bonus density bonus. And so further to that, then my question would be, should we stay that way, normal subdivision just by right? RCC, the special permit, really make it easy, just make it part of the same process, not a separate meeting for the special permit, just all done at the same time. Um but at the same time, does the inclusionary housing being attached to the RCC. At all turn off the developer for doing it, or do we really have to really up the bonus, the density bonus?
I mean, that's, that's, that's.
Because all of a sudden they're gonna have to put in an affordable unit or pay a fee in lieu. Now does that kick them right back to, I'm just doing subdivision?
And that it, that's the question, I think if 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 a two bonus units to one affordable unit is not palatable. I think the answer to that question is definitely yes. Um two, it could, two bonus units could be sufficient. Um it might, it might not be depending on how the developers finances work out. Um I I mean, I think.
The building of that affordable unit and or the fee in lieu of it.
That costs a lot.
He might just say, well, that's not even worth the two lots.
That costs a lot, yeah.
So yeah.
Yeah.
So so that's what we've been dancing around for a long time now, like how do we, how do we make this work? I understand the idea of, and I toyed with this as well, the RCC as the by right in a special permit for the standard subdivision. But then that question has come up, can you even force that situation? You have to have one by right.
Yeah, I mean, well, so could you have both by right, which is, I mean, essentially what we're recommending here.
To do both by right? I thought that was in something that we couldn't necessarily do, because we need a special permit for the for the inclusionary, right?
Yeah, so that's, that's where it gets a little bit messy. Um if the, if the, if the town wants to go absolutely by the letter of MGL. Then technically, yes, a special permit is the way that, the way to go, however.
And you just leave the other by right.
However, the state is very, this be, we have a lot of examples of by right zoning combined with inclusionary zoning. Thanks to MBTA communities and all of these municipalities that are already submitting, the state is very actively encouraging by right. Then essentially density bonus overlays, which are the three A district, and is actively approving inclusionary zoning as part of that. Um and it essentially is, I mean, I can't speak for the state, but my understanding is that essentially they're they're taking a position that that functions as a density bonus. And is the the vehicle, the developer still has the option to not provide the affordable unit and just do the conventional subdivision.
Yeah.
Or they like be, it's leaving the developer the option, um you're not forcing the inclusionary zone unit on them. Um and the the by right again was in response to the the town's concern that the RCC was not being taken advantage of.
Yeah, and I think one of the way the RCC was originally constructed. It was to make the lots a little bit smaller, have more open space and all these great things.
Yeah.
And then in the meantime, with no incentives, we didn't want to give another unit, we don't want to have another, another household come out of it by doing that. And that's how it was originally set up, we just want the same number that would normally be there, we just don't want to spread them out as much.
Yeah.
While the developers come in and they say, I build a house on a whole acre lot, I get more money for the house than if I build it on a half acre.
Yeah.
Split, just the nature of economics is the way it works.
Um and the by right example is actually drawn from a few other towns that we looked at who are doing it this way.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, and but so the idea would be really three, if you have for every ten, you'd pick up three.
Yeah.
Because one's gonna be affordable.
Mm hmm.
Um and if they chose to go devil's advocate here, they just, they chose not to build the affordable unit. And they did a fee in lieu, then they don't get the three, they only get two, right?
Yes, but the fee in lieu is currently structured, and I would recommend remain being structured as with planning board approval only. Or spec or SBA approval only.
Yeah, 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 absolutely, yeah, absolutely.
So so if the if the if, you know, the planning, I think with single family development in particular, sometimes it is in a municipality's best interest. To allow an in Luffy for single family development, because you know, the there's a question of are there resources best spent building a enormous. You know, five thousand square foot unit for, you know, that that becomes an affordable unit. And so some municipalities that have like a robust housing trust um might think, uh might opt for an in Luffy in in instead, and that's a very valid use.
That's pretty much what happened with us, so many that happened, it was, but they always paid the fee.
Yeah, yeah, but I think it would be up to the planning board on a case by case basis.
But generally, they couldn't say, well, I'm just gonna pay the fee and now I've got all three lots to, whatever, alright. But so your feeling is though, two as a density for per ten?
First, eh eh yeah, I think that, I mean.
Twenty percent.
Yeah, it's, I mean, it's in general, when um, eh this is less common um in for single family and and um. You know, for open space, threat the preservation districts, but in general, I I've done a lot of.
Really all we have, because we, we're not zoning anything that's multifamily.
In in general, a two to one bonus is, it is, that's when you start to see developers taking advantage of this sort of thing. Like one to one bonus, eh no voluntary.
Per ten, not gonna.
Yeah, no, no one, those are the voluntary programs that never get used. Um two to one, you start, not not necessarily in every case, but two to one is when you start seeing developers taking advantage, like actually buying into the voluntary.
Two to ten.
Yeah.
Two to ten.
Do you sorry, sorry, what I say, oh no, no, what I say, two to one, I mean, two bonus units for every one affordable unit.
Okay, okay, I'll get that piece of it, okay.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. I mean, we definitely need to, this has been something a long time. We definitely, from my past experience and all the discussions we had had with different groups over the years on this, we need to put in a density bonus. The question is what density bonus works, and you're you're saying is, you know, for every ten, so if we have five in the subdivision one. Ten, two, so for every five, you're getting one, basically.
Um and the key is that that one affordable unit is also in addition to the ten.
Yeah, so if you, if you just had five, you could get six, but then you'd also want one affordable if.
Yeah.
Or you pay the fee in lieu on that, so I I get, I get what you're saying there, not the question. Well, town meeting, go for that many, this is more dense, much more dense than if we did a single acre.
And that's, and that's why there's a lot of incentive based inclusionary zoning programs that don't get utilized. Because that, I I I appreciate that essentially three additional units is, that is not insignificant. Um and I appreciate that that is a sell at town meeting.
Yeah, that's, I mean, with the one being affordable, that's thirty percent increase than what you normally would get, and that, that.
And I think like the diagram does a good job of kind of showing how like, how much, I mean, it could all be developed conventionally. And then everything's developed and nothing's preserved uh versus the clustered.
The argument that was made to that, back at the time was, we only have fifteen percent lot coverage, the rest of the land while owned by somebody.
Is for.
Is open space, so, so there's a lot, everybody will find a way to make an argument.
Of course, of course.
Except for, except for the forty B, except for the forty B, and that's why we have forty Bs in in standard subdivisions.
Well, and I.
Conservation cluster would be great, we did build one in, but there was a lot of the land, and they donated the land to the town. So it was kind of a way for them to actually develop it with the smaller plots, you know, one of those deals.
Um I mean, to to the degree that forty Bs are a concern in town, any policy that applies inclusionary zoning. Keeps you at least advancing on your SHI.
Yeah.
I mean, you all are aware of that.
Yeah, and it's, the town has to have discussions about the forty B and what we allow to be built anyway. They're being built because people were buying them.
Yeah.
People want to move out of the house and move into a condo, we don't allow that to be built, so. But I think staying on track of what we've got here, you know, this, this, this all makes sense, but I, my personal opinion would be that that's. This would, RCC would have to be the special permit version of it, I think we could really streamline it, make it all part of the one, one permitting process all at the same time. And then I I agree with your density there, I I would say one per five all along is what I thought.
Okay, so.
Can we sell the town on it would be the next one.
So, okay, so that's consistent, eligible consistent then, yeah.
We have to be back from that standpoint, but I've dominated this now, so if somebody else want to step in.
And you have concerns with making the ICC a by right on the same level as conventional subdivision? Or is there a concern that we can't do that?
If we want to do the exclusionary housing, you're still gonna be doing a special permit, yeah, so.
Well, not necessarily, um I mean, if if you, because this, I mean, I guess it depends, it depends on how to the letter. The town wishes to.
We don't, yeah, we don't, we'll, we'll be sued, so if we don't do it to the letter, we will have, we will have.
There, there.
And that's how this whole thing reared its head.
Yeah, I mean, there is, there is precedent across the state of inclusionary zoning being applied without a special permit. Um that the A in mo- many, many towns that the A G U's office has reviewed.
In the by right.
Yeah.
In the by right, included in inclusionary housing, be in lieu and having to provide units in the by right.
Yeah.
Okay, that seems a little contrajit to a lot.
Eh yes, and that's, and that's what I would, that gets back to what I was saying earlier, tech, if you're eh.
It's it's a matter of like, is the law keeping up with what's happening on the ground, I think.
Yeah.
Yeah, but.
Yes, but yes.
Yeah.
Uh Mark.
And Mark, yes.
So, so the the issue is that with the increased density. That is being allowed under the three A districts, uh which are by right. The state is allowing those districts to require inclusionary zoning. So we are simply applying the same logic here by saying if there is a by right option. For a conventional subdivision that the developer can choose to do. And if there is a by right option for the RCC that has the bonus, but the bonus also requires the inclusionary. Because it is the developer's option to choose to do that, they will not sue the town. Um and that has been the way that it has been promoted by the state. In the three A districts that are overlays.
Okay, so so both by right and contractor's choice, which is what I've kind of said all along. Contractor choice is the way to go, we can't make that decision for them, we will always make the wrong decision, whatever they ask, we're all gonna ask, gonna tell them.
The idea being in addition to offering bonus units is a very powerful incentive. By right development is also a very, very powerful incentive.
And we don't have to have, we could have both by rights. I mean, I don't have a problem with both by right, the people decide, we own the land, decide what they want to, at the end of the day. And long as we're meeting all the requirements that we lay out, we should be fine with either. Yes, Kristen?
Uh yes, yeah, I have a quick question, which of our planning board members have to leave for the select board meeting at seven thirty?
I do.
Who's, sorry, I can't see, I I can't.
All supposed to go, joint, yeah.
I'm sorry, who?
I think it's all of us.
Everybody's going?
Yeah.
Okay, alright, then we don't have much time to talk about this, I think this is a great topic, and I'm so happy that um we were able to secure a grant. And to have the MAPC crew come and work on this, so thank you, and Paul, I know that you've, I really appreciate your help with all of this too. Um I think these are really great and really important topics, um I think anything that we can do to streamline the process. Um to incentivize people to uh property owners to follow our vision from envisioned Duxbury is 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 excellent. So um I would be all in favor of the overlay for probably both of them, the idea being that um that would help to make our bylaws more clear. Um it would also provide some diversity of housing without the special permitting process, which can get um. Kind of lengthy contentious and challenging for people, um I think anything we can do to be as transparent as possible in um. In our goals um would be, would be helpful.
And either way, with either or either of these, we have to have our public hearing, everybody around the neighborhood has to know about it. We saw the thing like we do any other subdivision, we'll just fix the RCC so that it's something that maybe people would want to use. Fix inclusionary so that it follows the law.
Yeah.
And then in a standard subdivision, there wouldn't be inclusionary, inclusionary would only go along with RCC, which makes sense to be giving the density bonus there. Um all of those pieces, to me, and what we were seeing, how this would layout would work, I think you could still use our RCC. As far as the frontage and lot sizes, I think is still like reasonable, those pieces of the puzzle. But having both by right, but clearly not stating the planning board decides, that's the applicant decides, yes. That's, that's, that's perfect, that's, I think what we're looking to do, if we can do both by right, that's great, I don't care which one they pick. They come to us with the paperwork for which I won't, and just they want it to.
Yeah.
And then that makes it better for everybody concerned, so. More questions?
Yes, so the the concept of a cluster is that um a certain percentage of land is set aside as protected open space. That gets protected by a deed restriction forever, so that's different than open space on people's individual lots. Um it it gets protected by the conservation restriction. The board um in in a, in a cluster, I think has the same ability to place conditions as they do on a subdivision. Or in a special permit, it's still a permit that has a public hearing, and you get to put conditions specific to that particular project to protect. Uh the environment, protect the neighborhood and the town. Um so I don't see, I I know that forever, we've always been doing special permits for these things, but I I I don't. I'm not particularly concerned to go from, to go to by right, because I know that you still have a a public hearing. You still issue a permit that can have conditions that can address any concerns. So I, I I'm, I I think the board should seriously consider looking at, you know, letting those two go by right. When you do a cluster, the, just kind of by nature, um so you you've got, you know, ten acres and and part of it's for the development. For part of it's protected, that naturally ends up creating lots that are smaller in size and lots with less frontage. Lots with less frontage means lot, it means a development with a shorter road and less paving. So that has benefits to the environment, and it also has benefits for the developer, because it's very expensive to build all those roads and. Let's not forget all the utilities that go under, you know, beside the road that we don't see, all of that infrastructure is now very expensive to build. So um a shorter road means that they get to save some money too, so that in combination with the density bonuses. Will hopefully um get some takers to go forward with this. We did a lot of clusters in Marshfield, and fifty percent of the area had to get set aside as open space. And for, I know for a while I was there, it was by a special permit, but we got a lot of them, and we created, we permanently protected our open space. And and I think that the residents like the idea that there was a place right in the neighborhood where they could walk their dog or take a walk on their own. Open space that they actually own together as a homeowners association. So it, um interesting that the two towns had two different experiences, it mu- must have something to do with the details of the regulations. But alls I can say is next door, they had some pretty good success with it.
No bonus, and the planning board decided, that that didn't go well.
Um we should, uh you know, a few more minutes, and then we need to migrate over to the town hall.
But you guys. Give me some direction as far as.
Yes, we're, 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 we're sorry, go.
Yeah, if there's any questions or like concerns, like we, we want to hear them, because we want to start writing this and drafting this and give everybody something to review soon. Um so I I appreciate like their concerns being raised now.
Yeah, I do have something I I would like to throw out there to the board, and that is that um, you know, we have a park site that just created, that's created a de- uh development. Um and they, the way that they've they've crafted it is there were a number of A and Rs in two different sections, so essentially it's it's a big, it's a development, not a big development. It might be fifteen, ten or fifteen total houses, I can't remember which, but how how do we ensure that that is included? Even if somebody's not creating a a subdivision, like with twenty houses, but but there's still units that are all connected. How, how can we ensure that that is somehow also included in something like that? Does, is my question making sense?
These were A and R lots.
Pardon?
Those were A and R lots, as I recall, right?
But they were A and R along, uh right across from the park, but then there are two pockets within, right behind the A and Rs that were actually subdivisions.
Yeah, we can't do anything about the A and Rs.
But but essentially, it's the same developer that's doing all the work, so is there a way that we can, uh my, Mark, Mark might have my answer.
Yeah, alright, bye.
Okay, so there's, there's, there's two answers, um if a developer can get, if a developer can get ten lots with an A and R. And they're looking at this cluster, and they could get twelve market lots and one affordable lot. If they came to you with what would amount to a, you know, a frontage development. You know, a frontage development of no new roads. Uh, but they, you know, could set aside some open space and, um. Uh, provided in affordable lot, they may choose to do that themselves. The second thing is, um, we did some work a number of years ago with the town of Littleton. Where they were trying to preserve roadside areas and encourage, uh, the preservation of a lot of the farms that ran along the road. And so by. Adding incentives for. Uh, development in the rear. Um. We we had to give some substantial incentives for developers being willing to. Give up their A N R lots on the front in order to get more units in the rear. Because they would have to build roads to get to those new units in the rear. But that did pass in the town of Littleton, we could, we could show that to you. Um, and they've had one development. That I'm aware of, uh, that is, that has done that. Um, and did preserve the roadside farm.
That would be great, thank you.
Yeah, but I think to Kristen. Point, if somebody has that situation, the developer said, well. If I do this whole thing one way, it's going to trigger. Inclusion, and they can do four of them by A N R by right and then just make the other. Five, a five unit or a four unit subdivision type of thing, so people are going to figure out a way around things.
Yeah, I mean, there there are non segmentation, there is a non segmentation clause in Duxbury by, that's a standard language that, you know, development of adjacent parcels within X number of years. You know, the subsequent developments are, that that will eventually trigger the I V by law, even if it's developed under separate.
Yeah.
Permits, um. But.
Yeah. The A N R stuff is automatically.
But they are.
Not required.
Yes, yes.
Can't do much about it.
Do we, uh, I'm I'm sorry, do we have? Any sense of? The quantity of. Developable properties in Duxbury that would in fact support. Ten or twelve unit subdivisions, thirteen unit subdivisions?
Not a lot.
Uh, yes, and, um, it's my turn to blame CrowdStrike. We had maps, um, we, I have the numbers.
Okay. Yeah, numbers would be good.
Yeah, I I think it's a surprisingly, it's more than we think, Wayne.
Well, that's why I asked the question.
Yeah.
Well, it's always been the discussion of what about all the landlocked parcels? You tear down the house in front of it, it's not landlocked anymore, so, you know.
Okay, um. So there are eighty eight lots that are above ten acres in size.
Eighty eight.
All privately owned.
Mm hmm.
Um, in terms of vacant, so. There, in terms of vacant land, there are three parcels that range between fifty three acres and ninety three acres. Um.
Not owned by the town.
Right, vacant lots privately owned. And vacant as in there's no structure.
Yeah.
Not protected. There are ten parcels that range between. Uh, twenty to fifty acres in size that show zero built area. That is classified as vacant. Um. A lot of these, as you guys are familiar with, are owned by like. The yacht clubs and the country.
Oh, going there, yes, you got the golf course in there.
And, um.
Not likely to be developed.
Not likely to be developed, no, but able to.
And wetlands are taken out of there, I assume, stuff too.
This is, um, this is just what they have, so.
Okay. I didn't know if some of those lots are where there's a pond or something. We got a lot of wetland around here.
Yes, I.
It was probably taken out. So there's there, there is, there is land out there. Obviously, we. And that's taking out town land, right?
Correct, all privately owned.
All privately owned, okay.
And could our M I P C, um, friends probably actually like put together maybe another slide for us that has those statistics, I think that would be really helpful for our better understanding of. What we can do. Thank you.
Yeah, be good.
Yes, uh, we will get those and update this and I'll circulate it after.
If we go down the by right option on the RCC with inclusionary. At the density that we're talking about, twelve, tw- twenty percent. If a developer was looking to go with a higher density, that would require a special permit.
Yes.
For the higher density, probably be written into the bylaw. Wouldn't be able to get any.
I mean, yeah, that would be a, or I should, that that would be a, that would be a variance.
A variance, yeah.
A variance, but that would, that would, that would mean. That.
Then I go forty B, right?
Yeah, but I I I cannot imagine. I shouldn't say that, but something will surprise you. Uh, that would be a disincentive, the variance.
The question is, can we get the RCC? To be. Acceptable enough. That a lot of these. Forty B developments become an RCC, that that's, that would be, I think, our ultimate goal. That slightly smaller lots might have slightly, because we're not going to change our setbacks or anything else on these lots, so they're potentially smaller, how does this sound?
So when the forty B developers are coming, what are they coming in with? Like, still single family, um, or.
Close to condo.
Condos.
Developments.
I feel if if the option is between like condo, like your your venue for that is three A or it's it is the M B T communities. Um, if a developer wants to build condos, the RCC is still single family home.
It's still single family, but I didn't know if that would incentivize some of the, some of the properties, if they could get more houses on, they might not go forty B with the apartments, or I mean, with the condos, they might. Do be, we also have, nobody likes to hear, but we do have a need for condos in town. A lot of people move out of the big house and they want to stay in town and they want a condo, they don't want to take care of their yard anymore.
Yes.
So. There is a need. Uh, yes, introduce yourself, please.
Sure, Matthew Ballstrom here on behalf of the Fort, Duxbury's Affordable Housing Trust. Um. Been a member of the trust slash, um, Global Housing Partnership, I think this was seventeen year. And I've been almost thirty years in town and my observation, Scott stood on the head several times this evening. How do we disincentivize the developer to choose, uh, another alternative other than forty B? And I and I hate to down it down to that, but that's. Really, many residences. Many of our concern as residents. And, um. I I I think there's some fundamental. Uh, parts of the bylaw that. Uh, we don't have, we don't have a forty R overland district, we don't have a lip. Process in our bylaw, these would all be other great incentives, uh, to, uh, disin- alternatives to forty B. Um. Uh, and from an affordable housing standpoint. Uh, as much as, um, we sort of get morphed into. The forty B developer side, uh, many of us are not. We 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 want alternative housing, I'm I'm a huge advocate for taking existing structures and converting them. Uh, that way you're not creating anything new, you're taking one off one side of the ledger and putting one on the other. Uh, an example, that might be some sort of bylaw that would allow. Existing single family houses that have, uh, detached. Right, and you can condo it and then deed restrict it and maybe it'll counter S H I.
Mm hmm.
Town council has to bless it, deeds and deeds have to bless it, but it's a great concept. Now you're not building anything, you're getting, you're converting.
Mm hmm.
Um, so there's a few things that we want to do and it's a work in progress, but I I don't, I don't think anybody. Uh, in the room, but anybody that may be listening really wants. Um, forty B is the first alternative. Uh, which seems to be. Because there really aren't other options.
Well, I think there there's, so I think this becomes one part of your strategy to dis- like, it's not going, the RCC is not going to stall, if a developer wants to build condos, the. Uh, a revised RCC, amended RCC bylaw is not going to solve that. But if a developer wants to build, you know, just smaller, single family housing on smaller lots, then this addresses that. I feel it's, this is one part of the solution.
Yep.
M B T communities is another part of the solution, um. And, you know, be, those two prongs, like, that that might be enough to cover both ends. Uh, if you imagine like a forty R district, maybe that gets in the middle, um.
Yeah.
It's, it will multi-pronged.
Yeah.
But this is definitely covering one of the bases.
And right now, we just have. Our way or the highway. Okay, that's great.
All right, just real quickly, um. These are our next steps. Uh, please feel free to like, um, send along your feedback to Paul and he'll get it to us, anything that.
We can get it in our meeting minutes.
Thank you. And this is our contact information. I just wanted to thank everybody for their time. I know you guys got to run.
Just like, thank you, thank you for all your time and I, we appreciate the work in moving this forward. Here. Okay. I would think if I move that we suspend the meeting, we can do a number of events. At seven thirty. Are you that would be, I will with the planning boards, we can probably suspend this meeting, uh, reconvene in the select one meeting that night. At seven thirty, at seven thirty, okay. Move to the second, roll call vote, Kristen. Oh, you can mark this.
Uh, Kristen Rappi.
Wayne Dennis and I, I will not be at the seven thirty.
Yeah, I I may not be either, does that going to make a difference for the meeting, since we won't have a quorum?
So if we don't have a quorum, we don't have to reconvene. So you're both not going to be there?
I am not going to be there.
Okay. It's fine, Kristen, it's fine.
Okay, okay.
So we will just adjourn our meeting. Adhere. Second, second, Kristen.